Mics are on. Would you call the row, please?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Terry Cavner? David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 6, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held July 27, 2012. Item C is approve an easement to OGNB to provide power to the new public safety except a... Or item D is accept a 15-foot water line easement located in the southwest quarter of Section 23, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 14th Street and west of I-35 to serve the West Point Retail Development. Item E is accept sanitary sewer, water, paving, and drainage improvements for the Apple Village Edition, Section 3, located in the southwest 34th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Item F is accept sanitary sewer, water, and drainage improvements for Joshua's Landing Edition located south of Southeast 34th and east of Sunny Lane. Item G is accept sanitary sewer, water, and drainage improvements for the Willow's Edition, Section 7, located south of Southeast 34th Street and east of Sunny Lane. Item H is approve a contract between the City of Moore and the Moore Public School System in the amount of $284,623.66 to provide seven uniformed school resource officers for FY 2012, 2013. Item I is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $1,412,694.60. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion.
All right, thank you. Should I have a second? Second. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on any of these items?
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of quick comments. One is just with regard to the contract with the school system. This is a contract we've had for a number of years. It's... You all are probably familiar with it and aware certainly, but the $284,000 is what the school district will pay us typically whenever you're approving contracts. It's something that we're paying, but this is what the school district will pay us for the officers for the time that they're in the schools out there, so...
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please? Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a lot split located in the southwest quarter of Section 26, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th Street and west of I-35. Application by Life Church TV.
Mayor and council, you may recall this item from the last council agenda. At that time, it was tabled for us to find some more information out about the lot split and any implications that it may have for the development along I-35. On page 85 of your agenda packet, what you have in front of you is an aerial photo that shows the lot, that lots... I'm sorry, the lot that Life Church is looking at purchasing. And this is the lot without any lot split, so this would be the entire lot. And you can see that there is a 300-foot buffer around the lot that does include some existing development along I-35. And if... Should be aware that within that buffer, there could be no alcoholic beverage retail sales. And that's per ABLE Commission requirements. So in doing the research for this, we do believe that it's our primary responsibility to protect the I-35 corridor for any sort of future development or businesses that do go in. With the lot split taking place, we would meet that goal of protection. And I have just spoken with the Life Church applicants, and they have told me that they have made the... One gentleman that owns the strip center that is depicted in the aerial photo, they have satisfied his concerns as well. So having all of that information today, I believe that staff would recommend approval of this lot split application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicants are here as well.
How will it affect other retailers that may want to come into this area? Any ideas?
Well, if the lot split is approved, the actual frontage along I-35 would not be affected. However, you can see to the west and to the south, there would be that 300-foot buffer that would basically limit or exclude the sale of alcoholic beverages. Of course, that's a very minor portion of what people will sell in Moore, but just be aware, there is that limitation.
Anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Appreciate you guys bringing your church to town. Thank you.
When will you guys start trying to put a building up and all that kind of fun stuff?
Probably mid-year, then the next probably 60, 90 days.
So you guys hope to have a church fully operational within a year, I guess, or...
I think so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
We appreciate the opportunity to be part of this.
Thank you. We look forward to it. Item number four is consider adoption of Resolution 74712, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of the said city the question of authorizing an additional 1/4 of 1% sales tax, which is .25%, and providing for the use thereof containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor, items four through eight on your agenda this evening are dealing with the Parks Plan and the Parks funding. You all certainly are aware of where we've come with this, but just a little bit of history. The Parks Master Plan was started probably about a year ago or thereabouts to look at our parks needs. The plan was adopted, I believe, in about February or so of this year. And then we set out to look at those improvements that our citizens told us that they would like to see, that were needed, and began to work with our bond counsel and our financial advisor, looking at all of our alternatives with regard to how to fund it. And the proposal that's here before you would be to call a special election for the November 6 general election to submit two issues or two questions to our voters. One is for the quarter cent sales tax increase that you just went over, and the other is a general obligation bond issue in the amount of $25.1 million to fund park improvements. The Parks Board met in a special session last Thursday night, right Todd? To look at the final proposal with regard to the funding, the project list and all. And the Parks Board recommended unanimously to the city council that you... To approve these and to proceed with the proposals as presented. So again, number four and five have to do with the sales tax. Six and seven have to do with the proposed general obligation bond issue that we would recommend that you proceed with.
Agree.
If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Terry Hawkins is here. Our bond counsel can answer any questions about the technical part, legal part. Paul Smith was unable to be here this evening. He's... He had a child who had some health issues.
Okay, I just want to say, when we do these, I say this for the record, that we, as the city council, are not voting to increase taxes in any shape or form. We are allowing the city and the citizens of the city, I should say, to choose whether they wish to do this or not. This came out of several public meetings. I don't know how many we had total. I went to every one of them in the Parks deal. How much... How many were there?
There were several venues for...
Right.
...public meetings, 1,000 or 2,000 participated.
So... And this is what came out of those meetings, and lots of participation, had lots of surveys done, and this is what the citizens requested of us. Not all the citizens want to do this. And so anyway, the best and easiest and fairest way to do it, is to put it for election, is pure democracy, so we're going to do that, and that's what this is about tonight. Hope I understood... I hope I said that correct. Okay. We have... Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I just have a couple of comments real quick. And I've put a lot of thought into it, and I'm going to vote to support this and let the people of our community make the decision what they want to do with it. And I... And I just wanted... You know, I came in on the telling of a lot of this. I attended my meeting that was up at the elementary school and listened to the presentation, and got to put my dots on things that I would like to have. And there's a lot of good things in there. I want us, as a council, to be united in what we do and present this to the people. But it would just be my hope that in the future, as we move forward with multimillion-dollar projects like this, that we might consider, instead of just putting it all together, allowing people to vote on each one of those projects. And mostly, I'm talking about the bond, the 25, the wow factor, you know, the community center, the amphitheater, the Aqua Park, all of those projects. It would... I would like to see the citizens have an opportunity to vote on each one of those. Now, having read through the studies and understand a little bit that you want to do your best to present something that would have the best chance of passing. And if you break it up like that, well, then maybe it won't. I don't know. I'm new, and I'm still learning this stuff, but I just know that as... Somebody that lives here, and everybody needs just a little bit of our money to do good things, but sometimes we're forced to take the bad with the good. So it would just be my hope that we might consider breaking those projects up instead of lumping them all together as an all or nothing.
Okay.
Would just be a comment that I have for...
Sure.
My fellow councilmen.
Anybody else? We have a motion and a second, right?
I think we've got a...
I made a motion to approve.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please? David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Excuse me. Item number five. Consider ordinance number 72512 amending the City of Moore, Oklahoma, sales tax ordinance... Ordinance number 60 as amended by ordinance number 33183 as amended by ordinance numbers 47088, as amended by ordinance number 55106, as amended by ordinance number 67710 to provide for the levying and assessing of an additional 1/4 point... Oh, two... Or excuse me, 0.25 sales tax in addition to all other excise taxes levied and assess upon the grocery receipts or proceeds derived from all sales taxable under the Sales Tax Law of Oklahoma fixing effective date and date of termination, providing for the purpose of said additional sales tax, making provisions severable containing other provisions relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
I'd make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, vote.
Let me also say that even though this is an ordinance and you're passing it, it would not go into effect unless the approval of the voters is given at the election to approve the increase of the sales tax. So that's specifically stated in the ordinance, as well as it being a four-year term or a four-year period of the sales tax. Unless at some point in the future it's re-upped by the voters, then it would cease after four years.
Just a procedural note. My name's Terry Hawkins. We help draft the election documents. Steve is exactly correct on everything he said. This will only be effective if it's approved by the voters, but I want to remind, we need a motion and a second for the emergency provision in addition to the motion second on the ordinance, so...
The emergency provision is to get this on the ballot?
Right.
Is that... Okay.
All right.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved on the emergency item.
All right, thank you.
So we need to vote. We haven't had the roll call on the original vote yet. So we had a motion and a second already on that, right?
Yes. Would you call for the vote, please? Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Do we have a motion for the emergency clause of the ordinance?
Make a motion for the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider adoption of Resolution number 74612, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the question of issuance of general obligation bonds of the said city in the amount not to exceed the sum of $25,100,000 and to provide funds for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping various parks and recreational facilities, with all of the said facilities to be owned exclusively by said city and leveling and collecting an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon the... All the taxable property in the said city for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
Make a motion for this item.
That's a lot of legalese, Terry.
Second.
Thank you both. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider authorizing the execution of election proclamation and notice pertaining to the proposed general obligation bond issue.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
One thing I think we ought to probably tell the citizens is that we don't bring this to the citizens lightly. You know, we... I hear all the time citizens saying that, you know, the city's awfully rich all these businesses that come to town, and why don't we just use that money to make these improvements? But we've... You know, when you're building $50 million sewer treatment facilities and new fire stations and police stations and improving roads, our monies are actually very, very tight. So I just want to make it real clear that we didn't come to this decision very, very lightly. So this is something we feel that we have to do to make these improvements, so...
Amen, brother. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Would you call for the vote, please? Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of the employment agreement of Paul Smith as financial advisor and Terry Elhawkins of Philip Murra, PC, as bond counsel concerning proposed general obligation bond election and the issue of the City of Moore, Oklahoma management... Or this is from management, excuse me.
Mayor, I've not been able to get Paul's... Pardon me. Paul's agreement to provide to you, and I visited with Terry earlier, and what I would like for you to do is just table this for right now. It's not critical really until... Unless and until the bond issue is approved by the voters, so...
Okay.
So if you'll just table it, and we'll be back on this forum at a later date, either probably right after the election, depending on how that goes, and we'll know for sure where we're going to be going with that. In either case, with the financial advisor fees or the bond counsel fees, if the election doesn't pass, then there would... There's not going to be any fees, so...
Make a motion to table this item.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item tabled. Item number nine is consider approval of a lot split located in the southwest quarter of Section 25, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southeast 19th Street and west of Broadway Avenue. Application by David Young.
Mayor and council, this lot split is located just west of Broadway Avenue, and it's just south of the crossing of Broadway Avenue and Eastern Avenue. It is north of the existing Jehovah's Witness Church on Broadway Avenue. The applicant would like to split this and construct a daycare facility on the lot. It does meet all of the C2 requirements. There is going to be a short sanitary sewer extension that will be required. It'll probably be less than 30 feet, but the applicant is aware of that, and we will require that sanitary sewer extension to be performed whenever they do turn in their building permit application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that going... Is the daycare going to be on the corner? The pie-shaped corner or in the back?
Not the hard corner of that...
I was going to say, that's a bad corner for a...
Right, it's going to be located really just south of that pointed corner.
Okay.
Immediately north of the church, right?
Just north of the church.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve.
Thanks. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider awarding bid number 1213-001 purchase and installation of library workstations to Admiral Express in the amount of $59,308.82.
Mayor, this is a budget item that we put out to bid for some workstations in the back room area of the library. Lisa, when she was here, had asked for it for a few years, and Sheila asked for it this year, and we were finally able to put it in the budget. We actually had about $90,000 set aside in the budget, so we were... I was happy to see the number came in significantly less than what we had estimated it, but it's basically going to be, how many, 30? 21 workstations for the area in the back room behind the library where all the staff works. They've had considerably more staff hired there in the last few years, and we're just going to bring them up into the 21st century with regard to working space in the back.
Okay.
So workstations, it's for the employees, not for...
The employees of the library.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is discuss and consider the possible sale of city-owned property in southwest 179 in Pennsylvania and authorize the staff to proceed as directed.
Mayor, this is a piece of property that the city bought back in 2008 when we were considering putting the wastewater treatment plant on that site. After the City of Oklahoma City pretty well shot that down for us, the city council made the decision to go ahead and purchase the land at that time, more or less as an investment. And we feel like it... There's been quite a bit of interest expressed in the development community and by others. And taking a look at what we paid for the property, I sent that to you in an email, just under $6,000 an acre out there, and we believe the value of it's probably at least twice that much today. Feel like it might be an appropriate time to kind of stick our foot in the water and see if... Or toe in the water, I guess, as it were, and see what it could be valued at. We... I think we probably need to do an appraisal on it, and then we probably do a sealed bid process, accept bids on the property, but have the ability for the city to reject all bids or any bids if there's any concern about valuations or just any... For any reason. But I think if we can do that, and it certainly will have been a good investment for us. It's not a piece of property that we would need. I can't see that we would need the piece of property at any time, ever in the future, so...
I'd make a motion that we authorize the staff to proceed as discussed and directed.
Second.
Randy, can anybody bid on this property? Even city council members? You just said yes.
Yeah. At this point, they will, yeah.
Okay. Wouldn't be a conflict.
I think as long as it's a sealed bid process.
Not as... Yeah, not as long as... I mean, there's no connection there now with owning it, so...
All right, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Let me ask one other question. Is there any room for modification of this bid process? For example, I know one other major installation that was sold here in the city a couple of years ago, that they received the sealed bids, but then they may know the top bid and give the other bidders like 24 hours to take the bid beyond that.
Well, why have it sealed?
Well, why have it sealed, I guess?
Yeah, exactly.
Tell them.
Uh-huh.
Have an auction.
Why have it sealed if you're going to rebuild the?
Well, because you're going to take the high sealed bid, and then you're going to go from there and say, anybody wants it worse than, what they first thought?
I think a similar concept to that is being used by some cities with regard to other kinds of bidding items, so I don't think that concept is necessarily unusual. It's with real estate, I mean, is it, was it real estate that the other entity was?
Yeah.
We'll look into that, and we're glad to look into that. I mean, we're not to the point we're going to bid tomorrow or anything like that, so we'll have a chance to look at it, so. It's a new process for me.
Considered as if we get close to it, we can give.
Well, and that's why I said we would have the ability to reject any bids if we enjoyed that the valuation was there, so, but I'll, I'll look into that a little bit more and see what anybody else has done with regard to that, but I think definitely a sealed bid process would be what we would want to do.
Okay. Any else? We have a motion in a second on that, right?
Yes.
Let's call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number twelve is item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August sixth, two thousand and twelve. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars, eighty-eight cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, let's call for the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the, excuse me. On the wrong page. At recess, the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item thirteen is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August sixth, two thousand and twelve. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars, forty-seven cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Terry, I got your claims questions answered. Since they're medical and you can't get your claims questions answered, might as well just call for the vote.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Terry's not here, so Kathy, I believe it's yours.
Thank you. Will you call for the roll?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Item fifteen is the consent docket, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held July sixteenth, two thousand and twelve.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, will you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present before are still present. Item number sixteen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Anyone like to speak? Any, item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Steve, the signals on Fifth Street that have been recently been put up, do you know when they're going to be getting those set at a call or two about those not?
The fifth and I thirty-five?
Yeah, yes.
I'm pretty sure they are set, aren't they?
Well, when you pull up, it'll go, you could be the only one at the intersections there, and those lights don't change for a long time.
Those lights are set up where it clears all the traffic from the east side, they're through, and vice versa, in other words, they don't stop in the middle. And we waited purposely till schools started because we think we need to do traffic counts, and all that bus traffic coming out of that bus barn, so that maybe, probably need to do traffic now. There's still been some work going on over there, like last Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
We were pouring concrete panels back on telephone roads, south of Fifth, but it threw the cameras off, and it wasn't picking the traffic up, and there was this delay there.
Oh, okay, that could have been what they were calling about then.
Yeah, Friday, yeah, Friday it did that, and plus, we lost, you know, we got that set up for a left and a right turn lane, and we only had one lane of traffic too, so they were stacking up twice.
All right, okay, okay.
It is going to be different than what we had over there, with just stop signs on each side of the highway, but whenever the, everything's complete over there, we'll make sure that it's going to be running as optimal as possible.
In process, so.
Do you plan on, I had a call, the, the traffic on, let's see, telephone going north? It's maybe you can turn left or right?
What we're doing now, replacing those panels, they were soaked, I mean, they were hammered, so we're, when the concrete work there, when we get through, we'll strike that, one lane southbound and two lanes, person westbound.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple, just a couple of things. Twelve Street's looking really good. Be excited when that's open, but it.
Remember, we have another half to go, tell you about.
Yeah, but it looks.
When we're finished, we're only half finished.
It looks good, and I guess this past week, there's a few water main breaks. I got a, one telephone call from a citizen and called Stan Drake, he called me back, and the city crews were out there working, and I wasn't positive, and the homeowners weren't sure either, will, will they stay out here till they get it done, or do they go home? He said, no, they'll, they'll be out here till they get it done, so they were very grateful and appreciative of our guys that were out there working, and I think Stan followed up with one of the homeowners and the lawn that had been dug up, and they're going to fix that. So, I just, I, really makes it a joy to be on city council, and as a councilman, when I call somebody, you guys call back, and we're able to address those issues that our citizens have, so thank yous very much, and thanks for, for staying there and getting their water back on.
Appreciate you guys. Okay, item C is items from the city manager, trust manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I wanted to mention the article that we became aware of and got posted online today from Money Magazine. We were very excited about that, that's, they posted their best places to live in small cities for two thousand and twelve, posted the top one hundred cities across the country for Money Magazine, as, and what their rankings are and the criteria, I'm not exactly sure it's, I'm sure it's in the article, I didn't get to read the whole thing, but Moore was listed in that article, I think for the first time ever, as a great place to live. We were number seventy-seven in the top one hundred, but there was four, only four cities in Oklahoma that were included. Our friends in Broken Arrow were sixty-nine, just a little bit ahead of us, and our friends to the north in Edmond were seventy-three, just slightly ahead of us, and our friends to the south in Norman were number ninety-two. So, we were proud of those numbers, so I think that shows the hard work and that's been going on here for a number of years in the community and, and by a lot of folks, so we were very excited about that. I just want to mention National Night Out and thank the council members, our police officers and the community members for the success of that. We had about seven hundred and fifty citizens estimated that were at their National Night Out events, twenty neighborhoods, we had about ten police officers or so, twenty staff members, city council members and sponsors, so I think that was a very successful event. I know there was quite a few more neighborhoods and folks involved, so we're hoping that'll just continue to grow, but thanks to the police department and Deeder's group and others that helped put that thing together. Another thing I wanted to mention and get your thoughts on tonight is that, believe it or not, we need to make a decision with regard to Halloween pretty soon. Jamie's trying to get the newsletter out, and we're already beginning to get some calls. Halloween is on Wednesday night this year, so there's some question as to whether we'll have it on Wednesday night or on Tuesday night. I can tell you that the community centers event that they have every year is going to be held on Saturday night before that, which is the Red Ribbon Day and the Parade Day and all that, so the, the Old Town, Honda Old Town, the community centers event and all that's going to be held on Saturday. So, the ACOG used to kind of make recommendations as for cities as to which night to hold Halloween on, they don't do that anymore, so we need to decide whether we want to leave it on the thirty-first, or possibly move it to Tuesday evening or some other day, but perhaps Tuesday evening before that, so any particular thoughts on that?
What day's it on the calendar?
Wednesday, the thirty-first.
That'd be great. Yeah, if it's on Wednesday, well, the churches will be doing things anyways, and maybe the kids after can, or before can. I don't know. Yeah, I'd say leave it on Wednesday.
Keep it that one, so, yeah. Because a lot of kids go to churches and schools anyways on that night anyways.
Right, sure.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Okay, we'll do that, it's easy enough.
What about Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving, I think, is on Thursday this year.
Okay. All right, we're good to go.
I also wanted to say, we appreciate your support and the, on the election matters you dealt with recently, but what I wanted to say out there to the public is, we will absolutely have a, an aggressive campaign for public education to make people aware of what we're asking them to consider. I know that we haven't got all the dates finalized or exactly finalized what we'll be doing, but we'll have a number of public sessions that people can go to. Todd will be on the, it'll be Todd's Road Show around town as far as making presentations to any group, church group, civic group, any other group, anybody that would, would like to see it or hear about it, we'll do that, as well as publish quite a bit of information about it and how it will affect taxes and that sort of thing, so we're looking forward to that and looking forward to making our citizens aware of, of what this is all about. I had also emailed to you all earlier, the recap on what we had as far as expenses for the July third and fourth activities, with the thought in there that we would change that next year to a one-day event. We didn't, I didn't put an item on necessarily to have a, have a vote, we can do that if you think it's necessary, but again, I wanted to get your thoughts on one or two-day event. We spent, again, just for your information, we spent forty thousand dollars on the fireworks and a total expenditure of about seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars out there for the, I guess essentially, day and a half, two-day event that we, that we had. We've had a lot of internal discussions about that and feel that we can probably make a one-day event, starting with the car show in the morning, activities and events in the afternoon, culminating with the fireworks, work out pretty well, so I guess really wanted to get your thoughts on that more than anything at this point.
Do you have a thought on how much money that would save?
I would say that there would be some savings, it wouldn't be significant, and fireworks costs are still going to be there, and a lot of the overtime cost for the employees are still going to be there. Entertainment costs, depending on who we get, will be that much or more, so it's, it's not really, it, it could save a little bit, it's not really a money-saving deal though, really, as far as that goes. I think the day before, the car show went extremely well this year, it was in the morning of the third, but then the afternoon of the third and on into the evening was, was pretty slow. Now, we had the concert with Johnny Lee the Third this year to try to draw more people out on the third rather than the fourth, and that was somewhat successful, but most everybody goes out there for the fireworks.
You know, my thought on the car show, there are several other communities who also have car shows, like on the fourth and so forth, and if our, having it on the third may not have been advantageous to our show rather than having it on the fourth. Just, yeah, the thought.
It was on the fourth? Okay, well, I misspoke then. It was on the morning of the fourth?
So, you still consider it to be successful and so forth?
I think we were pleasantly surprised with the car show.
Does it, the city make much on that, does it bring in a lot of people from outside or is it mainly just folks that live here?
As far as the, the whole deal? Oh, yeah, I mean, tons of people come in, I mean, I don't know how much money they spend where they're here, they come for the fireworks and they leave, for the most part. It's definitely not a money-making event for us. It's an entertainment venue that people expect, and, and we've had just many, many, many positive comments about the show, the fireworks show, and the whole show, the whole show was very well done, Todd and Deeder and their departments are really put on a bang-up show.
I, I heard one person describe it who valued their opinion, said that it was like the best of the state fair crammed into one day, as far as midway that thing is concerned. I thought that was very good, and, and without some of the negatives of the state fair as well, so I thought that was.
We've been very fortunate over the years to not have any problems or incidents out there, it's just been very good, very, very good.
How'd the movie, Mike, go?
Todd, you want to come up and talk about that, the movie in the park deal the other night?
Movie in the park?
Yeah.
Through the master plan process, we looked at some programming changes, and we made some contacts with other communities, and a lot of them do the movie in the park, so we did this, this last Saturday, we had over three hundred people there, wildly successful, the weather was wonderful, it rained earlier in the day, and so the temperature was wonderful, so the reception was great, like, like people.
Great.
And so, and we thought it was a huge success.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're probably going to proceed along the lines of a one-day event, and then as that grows closer, we'll make those final decisions, but pretty early on, we've got to make, again, put it into the travel magazines and the stuff the state of Oklahoma does and all that, so, you know, Deeder or Jamie, when that is?
We'll have to look, Tris is probably managing that right now, it's possibly very drastic, but we'll just see, I mean, it's very safe that they'll start committing their
Plans already, right.
I did have, over Fourth of July, some people called and inquired about our fireworks stance, and I wanted, since we're kind of talking about fireworks here, do we have any interest in changing our city's stance on this, or do we want to increase our rigor in, in shutting it down? Because I've done quite a bit of research on it recently about what other communities do, and there are some things we can do if we want to really bring it to a shutdown, if we want to make a one-day event, or, you know, it's, because I know there are a couple of communities that do it, you know, I have my opinion about it, basically it was like a war zone, but, you know, y'all, y'all stocks, you know, I mean, this is kind of a, a big deal to some people, you know?
As far as personal fireworks, your home, front yard?
One of the things that a couple of cities in Oklahoma do is they actually encourage people to bring those out to the park and shoot them off at their park, under, you know, supervision of firefighters or whatever, and that might not be such a bad idea than go after rigorous enforcement in the neighborhoods, because I agree with you, it's like a war zone.
Yeah, I went to, I guess it was Yukon or Mustang, I went out there a few years ago to theirs, because they, they legalize it for certain hours, shut the whole city. And I, I would drive through the city, I was being peppered with rockets and paper, and I had no idea where it came from. I mean, it was literally every corner you turned, you were getting hit by something, you know, there wasn't anybody around shooting anything off, you know, so, it's, you know, but I respect everyone's rights, want to celebrate the Fourth of July, I just, you know, it's, it's a tough deal.
One of those things too, I think that you're just so outnumbered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What can you do?
We go around and round with this every year. Jerry and I do, Gary, Fire Chief and I do. We go around and round with this every year in terms of what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. We, we just simply don't have the manpower to try to address it. And it's, it's, it's grown. It's increased as far as what people are doing. And I'm not sure exactly why, but the last few years have really, have gotten worse each year.
But you know, with the big event going on one end of town and so forth, it requires a number of officers down there. I mean, where are you gonna get the other officers to?
Well, I mean, literally, we could bring in the National Guard and not have enough people. I mean, it literally is to, is to that point. I mean, it is because it's up and down every street.
There is one thing that some communities have done, when I was looking online quite a bit, and they've actually given, I haven't talked to the fire chief about this. I should probably have done this first, but they actually give firemen the right to cite people for fireworks violations too. So that increases, you know, the manpower quite a bit. So that's, that's one option.
They've got their fire station built, so.
Yeah, they don't, they'd love to do that.
I think what we probably need to do is either have a, have an agenda and a mandor, a study session or something. Because this is, it's an issue that's a whole lot larger than just five or ten minutes worth of conversation.
Right.
A lot of these cities that you're talking about that do it, where they invite everybody out to do it on one given day, they're much smaller than us. If we were to invite everybody and more to come out and shoot their fireworks at once too, we wouldn't have a place big enough.
We'd say forty thousand dollars.
We might, we might do that, but we'd burn down half of the town in the, in the process. And we, we just don't have a space big enough for that to happen.
I'm not sure people would wanna do that. I think they enjoy.
They'd wanna do it at their own.
Well, and that's one option is that you set aside, you know, that afternoon, you know, six to eight hours or whatever and say, this is your time to shoot them off. And outside of that, you know.
But then you have to be able to enforce it outside.
That's, that's the thing, right. Yeah, you should have to do.
And that goes back to the manpower issue too, so.
If, if one positive outcome of it, I think we've got rid of most of the wooden roofs and.
Oh, yeah.
Whether we wanted to or not, right? I think we, that does bear more discussion, so we will do that before.
Gotcha.
Before next year, long before next July fourth.
Anything else?
I believe that's it, sir.
Item seventeen is adjourned.
So moved?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
To call for the vote, please? Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.